Good evening and welcome to the June 15th meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. Before we begin the open session this evening, we will be entering into executive session for the purpose of discussing wage contract negotiations with union personnel for both the Foxborough Custodial Workers Association and the Foxborough Maintenance Workers Association. Further, I declare that holding the discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position or the collective bargaining process itself. We will reconvene in open session and take a formal vote on the memorandum of agreement. I will now take a roll call on whether to enter an executive session. Michelle?
Aye.
Richard?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
And I for myself. So we, the committee is now in executive session and we will return to open session shortly. Thank you. Thank you and welcome back to the open session of the June 15th Foxborough School Committee. Before we begin our open session, we do have two items to vote on from our executive session. The first is a vote on the fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 24 Foxborough Custodial Workers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. Do I have a motion to vote on that agreement, please? Or may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Can I love to say that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Sarah's going to second it. Thank you. I'm sorry, somebody remind me, do we have to do a roll call on these or is it just a simple majority? Okay. So all in favor of the agreement as proposed?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you very much. The second item on the agenda is the vote on the proposed fiscal year 22 fiscal year 24 Foxborough Maintenance Workers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. May I have a motion for that vote, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Richard, thank you for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Both bargain agreements have been approved by the school committee, so thank you very much. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, open public comment. We start with the community inbox. There were no submissions received between the last meeting and around noon time today, so I don't know if there's anybody here in attendance now that we can have open meetings again that has anything. If you do, please come forward and state your name and address. No? So nobody's here, so thank you very much. Again, we are now back in open meeting and if you do want to come and present in front of the school committee, you're welcome to do that one of our meetings, or you can always continue to use the community inbox. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. We do have the minutes from our June 1st meeting. Were there any questions or comments or edits on those minutes?
No. Motion to approve.
Both not seeing any other questions or comments?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
That's good.
Sarah has a motion. May I have a second, please? Brent is seconded. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero zero on those minutes. Thank you very much. So those are approved. Next on the agenda, Dr. Burdos.
Wow! It's so awesome to see all of your faces and your smiles that we can be here without math, too. And for such a wonderful occasion to celebrate you in retirement. And what a year to retire from, right? Talk about going out, one you'll never forget and to start the next chapter. So this is always such an exciting school committee meeting to be able to recognize all of you in the many years of service and out of all of you. I love the way that Janet always adds this. We'll go through individually recognition, but 302 years of collective service. Isn't that impressive? When I think about any year in education, this year's been the hardest in public education, for sure. And we've talked about over and over how it's unprecedented and we've heard that term more times than we probably care to say it or to think about it. But it really is, we think about educators and the staff that work in the public schools from the bus ride into the school and everything that happens in between in the bus ride home and how everyone has such a critical role in the day and the life of a child and our students. And to have you with the number of years of service with over 300 is a testament to everything that you've done and then also, I think, to the community of Foxborough. And I just couldn't be more proud of our staff and our educators here and what you do every day for our students. So thank you for that. We wanted to be able to give each of you, we have a gift. And then at the same time, if there's, you know, any other comments or things that want to be shared, we can do that as well. So Mr. Canfield, we'll let you play Vanna.
She's slightly taller.
Okay, so Anne. Anne Brady, 16 years of service, all in kindergarten?
Yes.
All in kindergarten. I mean, I've always known Anne in kindergarten, but I didn't know if all of those years...
We're so sorry he wasn't here.
I know, I know.
And then Edna, 20 years as a school nurse. I know you had time before that, but 20 years over the Taylor.
And what a year for the nurses.
Exactly. What a year for the nurses. What a year for the nurses, Sarah. Thank you so much. It is a banner year, right?
It was unlike anything I've ever been through. Over 40 years of being a nurse, it was learning on the fly as we were going, as information was coming in. It was absolutely amazing. But I do want to say, Mr. Ruder and Mrs. Bream, that I had your children as, when I was nursing at the Taylor School and so that was the joy, it was the children. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Anne Farrell, she's 20 years in special education over at the Burl. And Carrie Sturdy, kindergarten, many, many years, 36 years total, but I don't know if they were, they were all in kindergarten? Were they all in kindergarten? Wow, 36 years in kindergarten.
Ruder.
All at Taylor? Were you all at Taylor all those years?
No, I was at the Burl School, the Lewis School, and the Taylor.
My gosh. And I don't see Debbie Anderson, secretary retiring from Foxborough High School in 20 years for Debbie. So we'll give her a clap. And Judy Dalgreen, as far as our assistant cook at the Ahearn, 34 years. And Jill Swanton in kindergarten, again, all the kindergarten, right? 23 years. But I know you had first grade some of my time here as well.
I did, I had first grade for a few years, too.
Yes. Majority of kindergarten.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
And I don't see Kathy Bezuto, so maybe she's joining online. But Kathy Bezuto was an educational assistant over at the Burl for 16 years. And then Rita Greeley, will be retiring at the end of this year as well, 22 years at the Burl as reading specialist. And Dave Budge at the Ahearn for social studies teacher for 21 years. He's not able to join us this evening, but we'll give him a clap. And then Carol Horda, she's not able to join us, but she's a reading teacher at the Ahearn and I know she was also social studies and ELA as well for 22 years. And Jody Freeman at the high school as a speech language pathologist will be joining us by Zoom. Do I see her up there? Jody's there, yay! 15 years. Jody, we have a gift for you. We'll make sure we get it over to the high school. And then Anne Bernstein, 15 years as an educational assistant at the high school and she's up there on Zoom as well. And then Ellen Burke, driving our wonderful children. She's not able to join us, but for 22 years of service. 302 years of service.
You must be all exhausted.
You've got to be.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all very much. Thank you ladies very much for joining us. Thank you for all of your commitment to the students of Foxborough and the families of Foxborough. We really do appreciate it. It's quite remarkable, you know, in this day and age with the longevity, you know, whether it's, what's, I'm sorry, I should look at the list before I say it. You know, 16 years, 15 years, 36 years, it really is quite remarkable. So from, from, from me personally, thank you. And then from the committee, thank you. Thank you. And from the town, thank you.
You're welcome. And one last parting comment. It's so wonderful when our retirees come back to substitute. We love you, we will miss you, but you're always welcome back.
You know my answer ain't neat.
I know. Girl can try.
Mr. Ruder does have a comment.
I just want to say thank you to all of you and just personally from my family who is relative newcomers to town, that my kid's first year at Taylor was a huge transition year for my family. And the whole school, the whole school system and two people sitting amongst you made, really sealed the deal for my family to stay here. And I wouldn't be sitting here, my family wouldn't be living here, my kids would not be thriving. They're absolutely thriving, both of them. So thank you both for that.
You're very welcome.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Congratulations.
You're welcome to stay. You are more than welcome to stay. However...
I've never seen a group scatter so quick.
I know. As soon as she said subs.
Heard you retired.
Not yet, we still have another half day.
Thank you.
Enjoy your time.
Bye. Bye, thank you.
Longest half day ever.
That's fun. It's always a nice event at the end of the year, it really is. So thank you for always making sure it's a part of the agenda. Next on the agenda is the district improvement update. So Dr. Burdos, Dr. Mello?
Okay, so we're going to tag team this a little bit. I'll do a little bit more on the first part of this before we move to the MTSS. The district improvement, as you are very well aware of, we talk about this at school committee and come back to the strategy for improvement, that blueprint for us in our work and continuing to move forward and look for our areas of improvement. And it's also going to inform very much our planning for success. So what we wanted to do this evening, touch upon some of the focus areas from this year under each of the strategies. So the strategic objectives, there's three of them as you know, and the first one being ensuring equity for all, and that's developing more opportunities and structures to meet the needs of all learners to increase student achievement and access. So Paul, you should have a PowerPoint presentation. If we can go to that, what we're going to do is go to that first objective and pull out under the strategy, exploring how to best prepare and support and professionally develop teachers, staff, and to learn effective proactive preventative strategies to best support students who exhibit unique behavioral and social emotional challenges that affect learning. So in that first column, when we pull that strategy out, what has taken place this year that really goes towards that particular strategy? One is continuing with our graduate courses for becoming a trauma sensitive school district. We started this five years ago and just this year alone, we've had 57 educators continue to take those courses, whether it was one of the first four, and they've actually added a fifth course. And that particular course is more of a pilot, but we've been able to have some of our teachers, as you might remember in the past, we had 25 of them that came forward, had gone through all four graduate courses and had received the trauma certificate by completing those. We've now had 16 of them go on to take this fifth course, which focuses on racism, equity, and trauma. So as a whole, out of those 57 teachers that took courses this year, they took 102 courses.
During a pandemic. I just think that's just so impressive because there is so much already on their plates.
And the other areas that you heard about, some of these, just from the professional development and the online modules, some of those are listed for you. Didn't list them all, but just to give you a sampling with those courses that really are looking at behavioral and emotional challenges as well as equity and the strategies for teachers. Behaving, From Behaving to Belonging, the Inclusive Art of Supporting Students Who Challenge Us, Unlocking Emotional Blockades, Neuroscience-Based Tools to Optimize Self-Regulation, Joyful Learning K-12, Social Emotional Learning Matters and Remote Learning, Solving Academic and Behavioral Problems in a Remote Environment. So when we think about behaviors that students exhibit and all of the work that we've done, be a trauma-informed school system, to think about zones of regulation, and just working with students and skills-based from an asset-based, not a deficit approach, but really what are the skills that we're working on? The, and this really is a testament to the work that Dr. Mello has done this year with professional development in that so many other offerings were provided, partly because of being in a pandemic and being online and having to think about professional development very differently. But I think that that's one of the silver linings that's come out of this. They were able to really choose from a very extensive choice list, if you will, and then be able to go back to those offerings as well. I don't know if you want to add a little bit more there?
I think one thing I would add is that the implementation of these virtual conference calls that we had, we were able to get FaceTime, no pun intended, with experts in the field who otherwise we wouldn't have had access to unless they were able to come. So one, and I apologize because I know I looked at this, but one omission that I see was with Dr. Lisa Decker out of the University of Florida. She is a Lockheed Martin scholar and she's an expert in co-teaching and universal design for learning. And we had, I don't think it's in here, is it? We had a group work with her throughout the year on co-teaching practice and inclusive practices, which is under this strategy. And it was just an incredible opportunity that I don't think we would have had had we not been in a pandemic. And it was just incredible for people to take advantage of that and we'll implement that next year.
Other areas here that come to mind are really reallocating our resources in order to leverage our equity strategy here. So as an example of what you see is the BCBA from a contracted provider to in-house staff. So in the past, we've always had this individual, but it's been in a contract. So it's not an in-house staff person. So we're able to take the same funds that, it's a grant-funded position, and then bring that in-house to then have continuity of services. Five days a week versus having one day a week and then going across the district. So it's really thinking about how we can allocate or reallocate our resources in order to get to our equity strategy here. And then our mental health teams and those teams throughout the district, as you can imagine, they're busy in any, in any year. And this year, the topics have been very different in really thinking about what our students need and then also planning even for next year. The Whole Child Subcommittee, that was part of one of our subcommittees and planning for returning back to school as well. The second strategy to point out here, and I, and I won't speak to this long because you had a full presentation from Mr. Michael Lazick on the March School Committee meeting and really looking at what are the programs that we have in district and restructuring them to better meet the needs of our students that are there. And those four programs, the step, the link, the team, and the DLC, you heard about extensively in March. The other piece to this is you'll see a lot more of this spelled out in specific action steps on the Plan for Success when that comes forward in the fall. The third strategy of focus here was MTSS, the Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. That, you'll hear more on the next agenda item, and that is really launching now and a lot of exciting work that we're going forward. So we'll come back to that. In the middle column there are objective academic excellence, rigor, relevance, and responsiveness. One of the things that immediately comes to mind is when we're trying to be responsive to students' needs and be relevant, think about the courses that are new for the high school that were approved by you here for next year. And then even when we had the most recent guidance update, hearing about the, those courses that students are selecting in order to enroll in. So having those new courses are a great way to show that we're meeting the needs that are real-world connections that are relevant and that are also students' voices coming forward. And we know that in order to be culturally responsive, that's what really needs to come to the surface, is student voices. Also, project-based learning at the high school, you've seen different examples, so there's some teaching and learning highlights in the past and the connections to those courses. We've also are seeing more connections that we'll see in the future with the new civics project that has to be implemented. It was implemented this year for eighth grade and then in 11th grade at the high school. And the connections really go to real-world connections and relevance. And then Project Lead the Way, implementing that in grade six.
And actually, I was there today and next year for our, what is it called? It's the greenhouse one, I can't think of what it's called, but they're going to bring it to scale next year and they're going to actually build the full-size greenhouses so that we can use them in the community. So really excited about that we have a grant that we can fund for the materials, so we're really excited about that. Green architecture, that's what it's called.
For what grades?
That one is, I believe, eighth grade.
And then another area, when we think about service delivery for our related services, speech, PT, OT, and what that looks like. ASHA as an example, that's the National Organization for Speech Language Pathologists. And what is the most effective and efficient way to deliver services that are really going to better meet students' needs? So going to a 3-1 model, which has more service delivery for students for the three weeks and then the week that's off, which is consulting and them being in a classroom and working with all students. So not to get down into the weeds for that, and that's something that goes through any team meeting with students that receive those services. But that's something that we're really looking at. What is the service delivery? What does it look like? How can we be more effective with the time with students? And then at the same time, through an equity lens in order to meet all students' needs.
And that actually connects to the MTSS work and we'll get into that later, but in building up what students receive in tier one, so taking the expertise of those practitioners and bringing it into the classroom as models for the teachers. So that's exciting. They're part of our MTSS committee as well.
Sometimes it's hard to really pull out at a broad base of how are you making courses more relevant and the real-world connections? And I think these are some very concrete examples to be able to bring to the surface and highlight from this school year. The third column, which is communication and community engagement. What comes to mind under this particular objective and our, and our strategy, first of all, is streamlining platforms. So when we think about going one-to-one and the roadblocks and bumps along the way that we had with getting the computers in, then having a platform with, if you think back, we try not to, to WebEx and all of the hurdles we had to jump there and then getting to Teams. And thankfully, Microsoft expanded to where, if you remember way back, we only could see four tiles at a time. And then they expanded it to nine and then they expanded it, you know, much greater. And that made all of the difference because talking about trying to engage people in a meeting, if you can only see four, I think about last spring and some of the music Teams meetings, we would have 60 people on a call and you could see four people at a time. So we have really come a really long way and that is thanks to Microsoft expanding that, but all of the work with our tech integration specialists, our technology team, and then our teachers, really learning the platform and then streamlining to where it's a common platform, K-12. The one-to-one devices, once we had all of those deployed, finally, all of them by January, that really was a game changer. I don't know of any other district that's gone one-to-one in one year. And that was a lot of work to do that on behalf of parents as well with their students at home. But we really are in a much different place at the end of this year and some of the initiatives that we wanted to, and I think about the planning for success specifically and some of our action steps, we've just gone at warp speed to get to where would have taken us longer. So that has really been a benefit as well. So all of the federal funds that came in through the CARES Act made that possible. And then all of the professional development, the work on behalf of the teachers, that has really made a significant difference. And then developing the plan for supporting teachers, again, the professional development, all of the online modules, the just-in-time, learning any time, anywhere, that has helped from a pedagogical standpoint and really thinking about how does it change your practice with teachers and really learning from each other and other types of platforms that they've used, whether they've been able to access them through Clever, through a single sign-on, has made it better. And then really changing practice, teaching's not the same and it never will be after, after this school year. One thing we've also, just as a, I'll make note, a recent change, so our technology integration specialist, our individual that's in that role at the high school is, is leaving us to go pursue her PhD, so we're excited for her, sad to be seeing her move on. So that's a position that we have posted right now. And just, it's the same role, but changing the title of that to a digital learning coach versus a technology integration specialist, that has really been a shift this year. It's not about the technology. And seeing that, just changing the title, not the job description or the role, but just the title itself is, seems small, but is really significant.
It really is. It sends the message that it's about the learning and the technology is there to support the learning, but it's not about the technology. It's about leveraging the technology to make learning more rigorous, more relevant, more authentic. So that's where we're at and that has already snowballed into several exciting projects for next year that I'm sure you'll end up seeing in Teaching and Learning Highlights, for sure.
So those are some concrete examples from this school year lifted from those strategies. Again, this is the blueprint, the big picture. This will really be teased out for action steps in that plan that will be presented to you in October. We're working with our team to complete that over the summer. And those action plans will be a separate one for each of the three years. But this is the blueprint that it, along with the other work. So you'll see that really teased out even more so. So if we go back to the first focus area, which is the MTSS that we're talking about under ensuring equity for all, that is just launching more so, but it really is, it seems like it's just launching, but it's not.
No.
From the work that's been happening this year and even going back to last year.
Yes. We're getting into the meat and potatoes now, finally. I think we, you know, we were on pause because of COVID and it was a little frustrating. So I want to take you on a timeline of sort of where we've been and where we're going, just so that it will refresh your memory and give you an idea of where we are getting into the work. So the multi-tiered system of supports, all sometimes referenced as the Massachusetts tiered system of supports, is really designed to really look at the whole child. Where we've been, and I'm sure you've heard the term RTI over the years, we, I remember in the early 2000s, I came here in 2007, so it was around that time where we were introduced to RTI. We had a professional development session, I remember it well, we were in the auditorium at the AHRN. And it was really about creating interventions for students and seeing how they responded to them in order to catch them before they were at a point where they were failing. And it was really revolutionary and we were really excited about it. And what that led to was each building creating systems that would respond to this RTI. And so what ended up happening was, it was great that the buildings had their systems, but we actually ended up having different systems. So at the elementary school, it might be called a teacher assistance team or a best team. At the middle school, we had the clusters. At the high school, we had the swap team. Everybody had a BBST. And so as we got into it, it was like, okay, this works at this level, but it wasn't consistent across the board. So when we look at the, sorry, I wasn't advancing my slides. Thank you for giving me the clicker. We looked at the intention of RTI, and you can see that triangle. The idea is that you have tier one. That is when students are in the classroom. Everybody's getting instruction that is supposed to be evidence-based, that is effective, and we collect data on student progress. And then we look for, through benchmarking processes, okay, who is making adequate progress, who is exceeding the benchmarks, and who is a little bit lagging behind. And there was those students who were lagging behind. Sometimes it was the students who were exceeding, but more often it was the students who were lagging behind who were identified for strategic intervention. And that might come from the classroom teacher, it might come from the math specialist, literacy specialist, a special education teacher. And we would put these interventions in place and then we would monitor them. That monitoring looked different at each building. The intervals of time were different at each building. Some of that was a function of the schedule, when the meetings were. For example, the AHRN has a great schedule where the meetings are built in. Other buildings have to create those times and get substitutes if they really want to look at data. So it's a complex challenge in order to make it happen. And then you would see that some students would rise to the top of this intensive need for support. And it's supposed to be a very small number of students. And these were the students who you try an intervention and they don't seem to respond the way you want, and then you try a different intervention. And eventually, in our district, that would lead them to the building-based support team, which is the BBST, where they would often be referred for special education services. And the idea is that by the time you get to that meeting, you have a lot of data to show. And I will tell you that that amount of data varied, again, depending on the building, because the systems were different and the protocols were different. So when we look, and you see this each year, whoops, sorry about that. When we look at our baselines and benchmarks, this is lifted directly from the 2019 report. We report each year on our special education population. And if you look across the trends since 2014, we can see that we sort of have a steady climb in the number of students who are receiving special education services. And that doesn't seem to be unique to any one school or any one system. It seems to be overall as a whole, as a district. And that's concerning to us because if you have these systems in place, the idea is that you can intervene before it gets to this point. So that was really our catalyst for change, for starting to really look at the multi-tiered system of supports. Also, as everything with education, MTSS was sort of rising and people were becoming aware of it, and it sort of started to push in and replace RTI across the country. So we know that we need to have a multi-tiered system of supports, which has required a lot of research and a lot of professional learning, and it will continue to require a lot of professional learning. But the goal here on this slide is to really create district-wide systems as opposed to building-based systems. So we will have a student support team. A student support team is designed to look at data about a specific student, provide a plan for intervention for a six-week interval, and then come back as a team and look at that student again regularly, so that if we see, okay, they're not making progress here, maybe you get some input from the speech pathologist and they say, try this. Maybe that doesn't work, so maybe you get some input from the reading specialist and that doesn't work. And you keep trying different things. And then, if it escalates, it escalates, but it's a lot more systematic. We will have professional learning communities, which look more, if I was a fourth-grade teacher and Dr. Berdoss and Mr. Yukna were on my fourth-grade team, we would look at what's going on in our team in our building and look at that data and look at, okay, who's learning? If they're not learning, why aren't they learning? What strategies have we tried in our instruction? And then we would have data teams. Data teams are more global in terms of looking at the data. If I was an elementary teacher, across the borough, the IGO, and the Taylor, and looking for those trends and seeing, is it a curriculum issue? Is it at one school more than another school? Does it involve instructional minutes? What might it be if students aren't making progress? And then, having all that in place district-wide and having the consistent language across schools, won't that be great for families too, and teachers to have conversations? Then we will still have our building-based support teams, but we would expect fewer students to be referred at that level because we have all these interventions in place.
And I think that that's the key piece, is the consistent language. Doesn't mean that we haven't had PLCs in place. We have. They've just looked different in each of the schools. And in some ways, parts of them look, or have been more efficient in some areas. So it's a matter of learning from what's working the best in each and taking those, and then having that consistency in structure and language.
Correct. And I think one of the best things about this process is that we've brought together a district team so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We're looking at where are the systems working really well and really efficiently? Are we defining them the same? Because the PLCs have been sort of defined differently. And then what is the way that we are all in agreement upon that this is going to be our path forward? So that's really the work that we have in front of us. So one of the important distinctions that is really different from RTI, and as we look at MTS, and it's so timely, particularly after the pandemic, but in general, is that MTSS really looks at the whole child, where for RTI, we were really focused on academics. And that's why other little systems grew out of that. There was a system at the IGO called the best team, which was the behavioral and emotional support team, because they really wanted to look at those needs of students, but it didn't really fit in our RTI model. So MTSS really likes to look at where are students socially, emotionally? Where are they behaviorally? And how does that impact academics? Because sometimes when we're looking at academic issues, the root is not because of an academic problem. And we know that about students. So this really strives to support the whole child, which we know is so important. And I love that teachers will be empowered through this process to really get supports to address a behavioral issue or a social-emotional issue and see the improvement on the academic side, or vice versa. We can see both. So you may remember that we revised our D cap, which is our district curriculum accommodation plan. Schools in Massachusetts have these. And the purpose of the D cap is really to provide a general accommodation plan for any student, for all students. It's not a function of special education, it's a function of general education. And really, it's a roadmap for teachers to say, okay, if this student in front of me seems to be struggling, what are some things that I should try? And really, they're just, a lot of them are best practices in education. But sometimes it feels like we're giving you something and it, it's going to help you. I always acquaint it to, it's putting on a pair of glasses. It might seem like I'm getting something extra, but if I can't see, I need the glasses to access what we're doing. So we presented that document to you, and you could see there were many things in there, from resources in responsive classroom, to preferential seating in the front, to graphic organizers, things of that nature. And teachers sort of keep track of those to see what's working and what's not working. And that was great. We rolled that out in the 2019, 2020 school year with a lot of fanfare. We had a very large professional development day. We modeled it so that teachers would see personalized learning through a workshop model. And then we continued it throughout the year with the professional development. It wasn't just a one-shot thing. We had training with Dr. Kristin Rodriguez and John Safir on universal design for learning. And so if you look at that document up there, you can see that we had tier one was really our district curriculum accommodation plan, and everything else was under construction because we just were doing one piece at a time. So that's where we were. We rolled it out and it got a little bit of use, and then we closed. So that is a sample of what the document looks like in terms of the accommodations. And the idea was that, as I said, teachers would keep track of these accommodations and then pass them in the cumulative folder to the next teacher. Because if I figured out that, you know, Sean learns best by sitting in the front row and having a graphic organizer, the next teacher shouldn't have to start all over again with that. We already know that about Sean. So that is the idea, that we would pass it on. The execution of it, because we were closed at the end of the year, that didn't actually happen the way that it was supposed to happen. So that was a little like a wah-wah. It was a little disappointing because we had a lot of momentum going into that. So this year, I did hear in some meetings that, oh, we were meeting with parents and we showed them what we were doing with the D cap. So it's alive. It's just, I'm not sure it's as robust as we had envisioned it being.
And to that, to be fair and transparent, we've always had a D cap. When you heard about our coordinated program review, which is now the tiered focus monitoring and how we didn't have any sightings in special education, one of the other pieces from the old coordinated program review is you have to share with the Department of Ed your D cap. So it's something we've always had, but it just hasn't been utilized and leveraged in a way that's been effective and efficient. So sometimes we, a reset is really important. And that's essentially what we're doing with this, to the point where, because they're seeing the value of it.
Well, and to be fair, it was not a really user-friendly document. There was a lot of text in there. So creating more of a checklist format, you know, this was created by teachers, for teachers. Yeah, it speaks to their sensibilities and they know, they see it as a tool in their toolbox now. So, and that was one of the things that we got really high marks from DESI on, on our audit, was they loved our D cap and they thought it was great. So we have that this year. We also applied to DESI has these MTSS academies for schools. And it's an acceptance process and you have to apply. So we applied for the inclusive practices. You've heard many times, that's a focus area for us that we are working on. And we applied to the social-emotional learning and mental health academy, given the needs and the rise in the needs that we're seeing. We were, we applied for the Taylor, IGO, and Borough for the inclusive practices, and we applied for the district for mental health. We were really excited that we were accepted for the inclusive practices for the Taylor and the IGO. Borough got waitlisted, but I think we can figure out how to include them. And we got accepted as a district for the SEL mental health. So all of that work will begin next year. Just got the welcome email from them about how we set that up. It's a three-year commitment. They send out coaches and we have trainings, and it's in the fine print in your packet. You can sort of see what we get as being part of those academies. It's pretty intensive. I became interested in this, not only because we were doing the work, but West Bridgewater, not West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, apologize, participated in this academy either a year or two ago. And I saw some of their teachers at MasQ presenting on universal design for learning and how they had transformed their lessons inclusively. And it was amazing. I actually had some of them come and present at our professional development. So, and they, they just loved it. They loved how great it was and how supportive it was. So it's nice that we're doing the work ourselves, but we have the support of DESI behind us. So we have our new working group. It's pretty large. We have stakeholders from every, every school. And we have people who are teachers, we have people who are social workers, we have people who are school psychologists, administrators, curriculum directors. We really wanted a cross-section of everybody who can give their perspective to this group. So we met, we had our first meeting in May, and this was one of the slides that we looked at was, what is our goal? What are we trying to do as a group? So our task is to build the understanding of MTSS within our school community and really establish the why we are doing this as a reset. Because as Dr. Berdoss said, some people really like the systems they have, and some of them function really well. So it's why change. So we have to really focus on the why of the district consistency. So we will audit the current building-based practices and our district-wide practices to make them more systematic. We will develop clear definitions of our different groups and teams, as I said earlier, examine the current tools and protocols that are involved in our intervention process. I will be adding some new tools to our toolbox as well. Examine our current sources of data, because we have a lot of data to inform teams, but again, we'd like that to be consistent. And then plan our district-wide rollout. So tentatively, we will be rolling out our initial stages in the October PD, PD day, and then we'll continue it as we go through. We'll be using this book, The MTSS Startup Guide, as sort of our guidebook to get us through. It's really nice. It has sections for reflection. And it's really sort of an easy read, so it doesn't, it feels like a low-risk way to really dip our toes in the water.
But I think the other piece, just to jump in with that book, it connects to what teachers know. When we go back to the RTI and the definitions, so they're able to connect it and say, okay, this makes sense to me. I see the need for the consistency piece. And this book was published in 2021, and my first thought was, why didn't we have this book years ago? It just would have helped so much because it connects all of the research that's there, is all that we, they're all our go-tos. The books that we've done book studies on, it's all based on the work that we've done. So now 2021, we're like, good timing, but where were you years ago?
Right. And to your point about it being what teachers are used to, there's like rubrics and tools in here. And one of them, one of the first things we're doing as a group is really auditing our own practices. And it really takes us through it in a way that's really typical of what teachers are used to doing. So what's your readiness for this and what is the work that you have to do? So next year, and this is, this is not going to happen like magic, and it's probably going to be bumpy, and it's probably not all going to be done next year, but we're going to try to really get the ball rolling. We are going to look at our master calendar to see how we can schedule these things into our school day. So currently, BBST usually takes place after school, so that one's sort of outside of the bubble. And also that, remember we said fewer students should be on the path to the BBST. So the student support team, as I described, that would be every six weeks. The PLCs, we're not sure about the frequency of those yet because you want to be able to get all of your stakeholders in your grade level together. We know that probably requires substitutes and planning, so we will work on that. And then our data teams, we are in the process through this MTS, MTSSS group of figuring out, will there be some building-based data teams? Will there be some district-wide data teams? So we need to figure out first what those teams are and who's on them, and then what will the frequency? So that'll be at a future update, but that's our work going into next year. Also, the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is requiring us to implement a new universal dyslexia screener next year. So that will be part of this because when you have universal screening data, it informs all of these teams as we continue to look at students and their progress. We also will be implementing a new universal screener for social and emotional learning. Again, we'll also inform this work as MTSS is for the whole child. On top of that, we'll start our work with the MTSS Academy. So we will, there will be a lot going on. I think you will have lots of updates as we move through the next three years, because as I mentioned, this is a three-year commitment. And getting people to shift out of what they've been doing into what we're hoping to accomplish will take a little bit of time. So we're having realistic expectations. So, I said a lot. What questions do you have? Brent, oh, sorry, that's your job, Rob, sorry.
That was Brent's. I'm kind of just kind of, there's so much here and so much to like process that I'm still kind of in a little bit of a fog. Just, so please, Brent.
Well, first off, as is your practice, I had seven questions. You answered five of them while talking.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
It's a really good ratio, because some of my questions are kind of out there. No, first thing, if, and I realize it a little bit, you're going to go through your studies and we're going to grow it out organically with outside support. But if you were to flash forward like three years and look at that, kind of what your vision is for the D cap, how does that look to you, any of you, you know, in elementary versus middle school versus high school? Or are they the same? And then same question for the transitions between those levels.
So does the D cap look the same at all those levels? Is that your first question?
In terms of, yeah, yeah, like, yeah, same level of interventions, or will that change?
It's actually a really interesting, it's an interesting question because as of right now, I would say there's a gradual decrease of the accommodations as you go up through the levels because there's a thought that students become more independent and they internalize some of these, that they can handle themselves, right? That's the idea. It's a gradual release.
Right.
So my, you know, I think as a district goal, the vision would be, and my hope would be, that the D cap is so embedded in our process that someone is saying, I didn't get, if we're transitioning from one year to the next, I didn't get the D cap on this student, and I need to see that before I even start planning for my year. I think that would be the first thing. And then in terms of the systems, I do think in the real world, there's going to be slight variations in how these systems are executed at each level because the schools are not the same and the levels are not the same.
Right.
I think the goal will be that all of these systems are happening consistently in the same intervals with the same purpose and the same language within, you know, by the end of that, that three-year. And I do think that having DESI to back us up will accelerate that work for us. Because I'm sure there's, I know, there's a lot of things that I don't know and that we don't know that they will know, that they'll bring to the table to make sure that we don't have, create speed bumps for ourselves. Because sometimes when you're trying to affect change, you take the long way. And I'm hoping that they're going to help us take the shortcuts.
Lovely.
And I would also add to that, I think that it's safe to say, we expect to see our special education numbers go down.
Yeah, well, that's a given, yeah.
Yeah, the more, exactly, more intensive interventions early, kid doesn't have a demonstrated gap, catch those things. That's cool. And then a follow-up, are you yet aware of districts that you'd like to dig into who may be in a different place in this than our trajectory?
Yes and no. I think there are definitely districts on the radar because of their participation in the academies. So those are people that we are very interested in. That being said, I think our systems will look like Foxborough Systems. So we definitely want to learn from people we can. But at the same time, we looked at a lot of other D caps when we were trying to revise our D cap as an example. We got some inspiration from those, but what we came out with looked nothing like what anybody else had, and we were really proud of that. So yes, if we can get a little jumpstart and inspiration for sure, but not as a blueprint for us.
But it could be ideas on how do you make scheduling work? So for instance, we implemented PLCs a number of years ago. It looked very different at the elementary level than it did at the middle school level, just as Allison talked about. The schedule looks different at the middle school. So we had to have subs, subs for teachers. They were pulled out of their classroom for, you know, an X period, you know, minutes to be able to have those teams meet every six weeks or six to eight weeks to have that happen. So when you're trying to leverage your time, because we also don't want to lose instructional time with students, so what are some other strategies from scheduling? So those are some of the things when we see other districts that have been able to make it work and sustain it. How have they been able to do? How have they been able to do that?
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I will say, we've had, again, many of these systems and some of them, one particular school comes to mind where they tried it this way and it didn't work. And then the next year they tried it this way and it was, it didn't work. They tried it this way. So yes, if we can find those efficiencies, it would be wonderful.
Sure. And then if I may, just one more. When you look at the, um, the student support teams, like the, the first level, um, do you anticipate, at least at this early stage, there being a need for different numbers of, I guess, support folks or whatever, when you look at the natural differences that already exists between, for example, Burl versus IGO versus Taylor, both in terms of gross enrollment and then also in sped population?
I think it, it's, that's another interesting question, not, it's more about the execution because it would be about each student. So if we had like a shared staff member, like the schedule, if I needed an SLP that was shared between two schools to be at a specific student support team meeting, then we have to schedule with that in time.
Yeah.
But currently we do have, actually, we've created a video when we rolled out the de-cap to show what the student support team looks like. And you can see service providers coming and going. They come and they do their part. They share their piece and then they, because we, we don't want to take a time away from student learning. But yes, that is definitely a consideration.
Thank you.
Those are great questions. Thank you.
Michelle and then Richard, sorry.
Sure. Thank you. Amazing presentation. Thank you very much. Very thorough. Appreciate it. We all do. I wanted to just clarify one thing because I think the comment was, you know, we want to see the special ed numbers go down. And just for if anybody's tuning in, we want it to go down because people, because the students are succeeding.
Successful, right.
And they're successful and they don't need it. And that's the goal, not, we want less people and, you know, less students in those programs.
Right.
And what I like about kind of the, the description of all of this, and I'm envisioning it from a parent's perspective, I always threw out kind of my kids' experiences was kind of that first opportunity to get to the teacher and to explain, this is how, you know, this is what my kid needs. This is how they learn. This is things we've learned from the last year. Trying to be that gap from one year to the next. And knowing from a parent's perspective, knowing that what they've learned and if the kid was doing so much better at the end of the year, that that bridges from one grade to the next and it goes from one teacher to the next teacher, I think would, will be fantastic from that perspective.
And not just yearly, if you're in a professional learning community, you've seen as a parent, and we've all seen it, we, if we have children, why is my child so successful in this class but not in this class? And it could be the content and they could just have an affinity for it. But sometimes it's not that. And so when you have all those teachers at the table and they're saying, student's doing great with me, it becomes, well, what are you doing? What are your practices? And so it can happen in real time, not just during those transitions, which really is what affects the change. So yeah, I think that is a great asset because I do think parents spend a lot of time trying to, and they don't have a lot of time to share that information. So you're right.
And I, so from not just the teacher's pers, uh, the student and the, um, parent's perspective, but also from a teacher's perspective. Because if a parent's not feeling like we have to get this information and, and get it to the teacher and kind of fill them in, then there's other things that can be discussed when you have that access. So, um, I, I, I see that it being very successful. I can see how it can be very successful.
Thank you. I think that's a really great point.
Richard.
I might, I might be echoing what was just said and Brent's question, you asked some questions about from year to year, and then you said the word transitioning. So I was going to say that I, I thought one of the best things we, you've said here is getting all the terminology and all those committees and all the schools in a very similar fashion. Transitioning from school to school is always high anxiety for parents and students, is it not? And so the, the common language and the common terminology, which is what I think you were going at grade to grade as well in transitioning, is huge. I, I, and I hope, I hope the community recognizes that. That, that's very valuable for the teaching staff, that they can all say the things back and forth, up and down vertically, right? Even horizontally. But I think it's huge. And then the second thing I was just going to point out is when you started your presentation, Dr. Burdo, you pointed out all the classes the teachers were taking. So one of the things that is, is, uh, I was going to say a heavy lift, but, um, is a challenge in our school system is finding the time and ability to build capacity for the professional staff. Not that, it's not unwillingness at all. It's not unwillingness at all. Teachers are all there. They're all in the game, right? But to build that capacity takes tremendous time and commitment. And what you've outlined here today, and I hope people, if they were paying attention to the details, you outlined multiple, multiple opportunities, uh, areas of improvement, different areas, you know, it just, it just, it comes into the whole soup, does it not? And so then when we put these teams together, then it's all there on the table, right? So we have plenty of resources in each one of our buildings and each one of our staff members to come to the table to bring these solutions to bear. And then hopefully to bring them to bear earlier and faster so that we don't get to the BBST too fast, right? We bring them early and, early and often, and then it reduces the, the end game at the top of that pyramid. So, um, those are the things that I took away from this. So, you know, thank you for all that work and certainly thank you for all the work during COVID to even keep us in this direction, you know? But more, more work to be done. I agree with you, PLCs, you know, time and PLC is challenging, aren't they, are they not? But, but, but valuable and real, so we just got to get it done.
And I think the point about the professional learning, we'll get that through DESI, but also the people who serve on this committee, they will be the stewards of this work.
Yeah.
The subtitle of this book that you probably couldn't see up there says, ensuring equity, access, inclusivity for all students. So this is really going to help us get to that mission that is outlined in our plan and our strategy and in our planning for success.
Related to that, where, uh, where is the, the district and the faculty as you see it now in terms of the, you mentioned universal, UDL, universal design for learning. Where is that in the conversation?
So that was used in terms of the professional development. The first big exposure to that as a concept that we all want to be working on and toward was in, I think, August of 2019, 2019, uh, with Dr. Rodriguez and John Zaffier. We had a book study on, um, high expectations teaching for all. It was really well-received. And so those practices, because they're supported by the de-cap too and the professional development, have really been, been permeating in our classrooms. And the inclusive practice work that we're doing with Dr. Lisa Decker, that will continue next year. It was at the elementary level this year. It will continue at the secondary level next year. So I think what we're starting to see is people planning with more of a UDL lens. But what we're trying to do is make sure they have enough UDL supports so that it can truly just become part of their practice. The, the PD that we've had has been really outstanding and people get excited about it because it makes sense to them.
It does and it's timely. So, thank you.
Sarah? Okay. My only, my only comment on all this is I, I, I really appreciate from the, from a student and a family perspective, of course, but I also really appreciate, um, the culture that you're continuing to foster within the schools and for the educators as well, um, to try to make this a, an engaging and challenging work environment for them so that they can continue to develop their skills. I know how much effort that takes, um, on, you know, within my own organization. And I can't imagine, it's nowhere near the scale of what you guys work within. So I can't imagine what it takes to do that. But I hear in the way you're talking and the way you're presenting these things and just, you, you know, just living in this town, I hear the engagement and I think that this kind of thing goes a long way toward that. So I'm very grateful to that because that is something that, you know, that is very important, that we have engaged educators. And, um, yeah, I'll stop, sorry. Closure's never a good thing for me.
I will just wrap up by saying the PD that we had on the de-cap and the UDL was the highest rated PD we've had. They, the teachers loved it. So they're very engaged in this because who doesn't want to meet the needs of every learner? Everybody wants that. You don't sit at home planning and saying, I hope half of my class doesn't get this. Everybody wants all the kids to get it, so. So thank you.
Educators don't rate PD high to make you feel good. They're, they're usually fairly honest.
They're very honest, yes.
But, but Rob, your thank, your thank you is important because this is, this, this, this is a little unique. This is good work in this town for these kids. You, you don't see this pervasively in all towns across the Commonwealth or for that matter in the country. So your point out of their, their energy and the teachers buying into it is right on target for this kid.
Yes, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you guys. And next on the agenda, nice segue since we set this up, right? Next on the agenda is the continued discussion of the superintendent evaluation. Dr. Burdo.
So this is really just an agenda item that's here. If there was anything from the presentation from the last meeting, I've started meeting with you individually, if there was any points of clarification that you needed, I think that, that's probably coming out in our individual meetings, but if there's anything.
I only wanted to add one thing, if only because for continuity's sake, this will be the fourth time I've said it, um, is that my stress, my, my major focus this year is when it comes to superintendent evaluation, direction of the district, was piloting this very odd year with some grace and with the best interest of all kids in mind. And then I, all the other goals can just take a backseat for a second. And not only am I personally and professionally impressed that, um, that you, you did keep that at the forefront because it, it, it had to be. And that, but I was also just pleasantly surprised, uh, not, no, I wasn't surprised at all, actually. Pleasantly reading that you also furthered all these other goals as well. But really just the, the, the big one, and this is just, and I'll say this to the whole committee again, that when I look at the evaluation, for me, it's just, it's, yes, it's all of it and you were very thorough in your evaluation, but it's, the most important one is, 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 was the structure of this year and the work systemically that went into multiple schedules for multiple tiers of kids. And it just, uh, the miracle of what's possible. So thanks.
So then just as a reminder, we have your individuals, um, which would go to Rob and then a composite, and then we'll have the, um, next step in July. We've set that date.
Right.
It escapes me at the moment.
Twelve.
Twelve, right?
So I look forward to the rest of the individual meetings with you two.
I'll have to say it out loud.
I will have just returned from.
Can I ask you, do I, are we going to have a meeting or I'm, I know I'm new, but I don't?
So what I had said at the last meeting is that even though you don't participate in the evaluation this year, that I would love to still meet with you individually because I think it's just, it's a wonderful time to be able to get an idea of your thoughts and going forward and, and what your thinking is.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the second reading of two policies, the face mask policy and the restraint prevention policy. Can I propose that we, a motion that we waive the second reading of both of these policies? Richard, were you, I'm sorry, for the first, for the first policy, I guess we have to do a policy by policy. For the face mask policy, may anybody, would anyone like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the full? Richard, thank you. Sarah, thank you for seconding.
The face mask policy first, right?
Yes, this is for the face mask policy. All in favor of waiving the reading?
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you.
Thought it was roll call.
So the face mask policy, would anyone like to make a motion? Any questions on the face mask policy? I'm sorry, as it's revised.
Actually, one question.
Yes.
Um, my question is upon looking it over, I just wanted to see all the edits. It, there was, and I'm going from memory, there was a part of the face mask that said, oh, such suspension of policy shall expire upon the end of the emergency as declared by the governor. I just, I, I don't have a problem with that, but as of today, the governor did lift a lot of different po, like COVID policies. I just didn't know how that translated to anything. I'm, I'm just putting it out there. Based on the way that this mask policy is, I'm totally fine with it. What does that, I guess, what does that mean going forward? Is that an appropriate question to ask?
So in this case, right now, like the Department of Education still requires us to have masks in the classroom and the school buildings, even though the emergency was terminated as of today.
Okay.
But being able to give me, based on the advice and consent of the school committee, if DESI then says, we don't have to have that, then that's going to come out. I mean, he's been working, you know, in partnership with the governor with all of this as well.
I assumed that, but I thought it was worth asking the question and getting your answers that people could, could know that.
And I think that, that's the point is we want to be able to have a mechanism here to where we're not having to bring school committee back together to vote, should that happen, that on the advice and consent of the school committee, I can then say, no mask at all.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the face mask policy revisions? So seeing none, may, would anyone like to make a motion? Sarah? Okay, so for this one, will you actually say we want to approve this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the face masks. And do you need the file number as well? So it's file EBCFA.
Okay, as written.
This would be the face mask policy.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
As revised, right?
As, as revised.
A second.
And so the second from Brent, all in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you very much. Next on the table, would anyone like to make a motion to waive the second reading of the, uh, of file JKAA, the restraint prevention? Sarah and Michelle, thank you for seconding. All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you. Any questions or comments or edits on this, on the restraint prevention, revised restraint prevention? Thank you.
No.
No? So seeing no questions or comments, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the committee approve the restraint prevention file JKAA as revised.
Thank you.
Second.
Right, thank you very much. All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you very much. Thank you to the policy subcommittee.
Yes.
For all your work there. With the support of, I'm sure, many people. So thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Yukna.
Yes. So what you have is the athletic training service proposal. We went out to bid on this as well. We have been very fortunate, obviously Brigham Women's does have a, uh, operation within the Foxborough Town Limits. They have been our athletic trainer services. This will be going into like.
Hold the mic.
Oh, sorry.
This will be going into the sixth year with them. The advantage for us under this type of an arrangement versus having our own individual internally is that they get constant training from the Brigham Women's on the different techniques and skills that are necessary. And that quite honestly, they have a higher level of ability to continue to train staff in this area. So what's happened is that the rate for FY21 was $30.30 an hour. We have a listed amount of hours we anticipate using. They will flex with us if we need more or less. They also will offer a summer program, conditioning program for our athletic department, uh, which is not just for any one team, it's for all teams and any child can basically participate in. And, uh, that program has been successful in past years. And that program has been successful in past years. Obviously, we didn't run it last year due to COVID. They were the only responders, although we did have three different groups that had asked for information on the bid. So, we anticipated that we would have some additional bids on it, but I know no one's unhappy that we were able to stay with the Brigham. We're going to also keep the same staff member we've had, who has done a phenomenal job, knows the kids, knows the programs. So, we're looking forward to it. So, while there's a slightly higher increase in year one, it's a 2% increase for year two and year three. So, our recommendation is to accept the Brigham Women's bid for FY22, '23, and '24.
Questions?
I'll just thank you for doing this work again, for the, what, sixth or seventh year. Having certified athletic trainer services that are trained consistently at a very high level is absolutely critical to the safety of our students, and it makes no sense to do anything less in affording us this great opportunity. So, I wholeheartedly agree and support this.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
This, these athletic training services, I'm sort of assuming it's at the high schools. Is that correct? Or is this through?
It's high school sports, yes.
High school, that's what I thought. Okay.
Now, and I, the continuity, I think, is a true benefit, you know, the same, not the same organization, but having the same person, I think, is a benefit to the athletes and to the schools as well.
The other advantage, I didn't mention, but the other big advantage with the Brigham is that because of the size of their facility and staffing in this particular area, when our individual is not available, or when we're running multiple programs at the same time, but in different locations, let's say we have a program going on at the Ahern, and we also have one at the back of the high school, and we physically can't have one person, they also can augment that with additional staffing, which that is critical. You can't be kind of held hostage when someone's out sick, that you don't have the service number one, or, as I said, if you needed twice as much service, that you really didn't have that option, you had to choose which person, you know, where you were going to send them, and potentially be in the wrong place at the wrong time. So, again, I think it's worked out very well. I think it's worked well for families. When children do get injured, whether in a sport, sporting event, the parents most times get to talk to the trainer, who explains things that they should be doing, what next steps they should take, if they should go to, you know, have x-rays and stuff like that. So, you know, gives them, I think, one more level of comfort in that, okay, something's happened, but at least there's steps that are to be taken here.
So important. So important.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Thank you. I assume we need to vote on this bid, so may I have a motion, please, from somebody? Richard?
I'd move to accept the proposal for athletic trainer services for the three years as designated.
Thank you. Sarah, thank you for seconding. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Yukna or Dr. Bertos? I'm not sure who's doing this one.
Either one of us, we're really fortunate with the Diamond Club, when they make their, it's been an annual donation, and this one that you have here is for $2,500, which is to help with assistant coach payments. As many of our sports, the boosters will have additional stipends that they do for coaches, in addition to what we already have, based on numbers and the number of teams, et cetera. So, this one is from the Diamond Club and for $2,500. Bill, I don't know if you have anything else to add as far as with the coaches?
No, we just have instituted, years ago when I first got here, this was done, basically, where the individual boosters could effectively hire additional coaches and pay them, and we kind of lost control, if you will, of, first of all, people that should have been cored, should have been, you know, verified, not that we ever had any issues that way, but, so we took everything inside. And basically, the program, we met with all of the boosters' clubs altogether, and explained the situation that anything that they do that's, you know, funding our programs, whether it's donations to buy equipment or do something like that, comes back through you as a school committee. We actually implement it. So, Dr. Bertos would, you know, look at who, you know, we're going to hire for those positions, and make sure that they're, they've been, you know, vetted properly, and go through it. Because, again, in some cases, one of these people may be the one that's on the bus, and might have two buses, and they're the only one on the bus with the kids, and you want to make sure that everything has been done the way it should be. So, everything, that's why everything flows back through you now, versus them just kind of doing their own thing.
Right. Thank you. Any, any questions, comments?
No.
No? If so, may I have a motion to accept?
I move to accept the generous donation from the Foxborough Diamond Club in support of assistant coach stipends.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Sarah, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you with much gratitude to the Foxborough Diamond Club. We really, I know the students appreciate it, the families appreciate it, and the community appreciates it. So, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, proposed 2021, 2022 school committee dates.
So, we had a discussion at the last meeting of whether we were going to remain here in the gala room here at Town Hall versus going back to the high school, and it was decided to continue here because of the technology capabilities and to have the support, if we needed, of being able to zoom in. We don't have that capability at the high school. But then, at the same time, based on that, we are limited to our evenings. So, for instance, you know, we've, in the past, been Monday nights, but this year, we've been Tuesday nights. So, these are Tuesday dates, but they mirror what we have done this school year.
Thank you. Thank you. And these also, I had on the other matter, we'll save it for the other matters, but we do want to also discuss the potential of moving our meeting time slightly earlier, so we can cut that to another matter, since that wasn't on here. So, do we actually need to, I'm sorry, I don't remember. Do we need to vote on the proposed dates?
I have a question. I was looking over the dates. I did just notice that the last date was June 28th, and that was after school. I didn't know if there was a reason why, like, after the end of the school year.
It's just where it falls by taking that second, and Janet, second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or maybe a meeting shorter than we usually have, so whether you want that date after school is something.
Right, because we, we have that, we have that long gap between the middle of May and then the middle of June, but that's because Memorial Day is in there.
And also, town elections, town meeting.
Right.
Okay. And if we ever, as past practice has been right, we can always, if there's not enough business to warrant a meeting, we don't need to meet, just to see each other's shining faces.
And then, the same is true of the opposite. If we find that we have, we need to meet before that date, we've set dates as well.
We learned that this year. We had several extra meetings, I recall.
Did we have need for extra meetings, Allison?
We did.
Oh, really? What was going on? Sorry.
Hopefully, we won't be meeting weekly in the summer like last summer.
That's right. Yeah. I didn't remember.
How quickly you forget.
There are not a lot of people that I would have wanted to spend a week with this past summer, so, thank you. Questions or comments on the, on the proposed calendar?
No, I think we.
So, just consensus, I think.
Consensus. I'm fine with that.
Do we have to vote, or no?
Just consensus.
Looks great.
Exciting. Thank you very much. Other, other matters, and look at us, back on, back on schedule. I get so excited about that. I really do. It's kind of sad.
You're winning. You're winning.
How sad my life is that we do this.
Oh, you have skills.
Other matters. Dr. Mello, Dr. Bertos, Mr. Yukna.
I can, I can start from some logistical things. Our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey, although the last day of school for students is tomorrow and staff is the following day, that survey will not close until Friday. So, if somebody has not had a chance to fill that out, reminders have been going out through K-12 for that. Students, as a reminder, if anyone's listening, for our middle school and our high school students, rising sixth graders through rising seniors, they're keeping their laptops at home, they are not returning those. All elementary are already in the classroom, and then our fifth graders will receive their laptops when they return to school in the fall. The MASCE conference, the dates are out for school committee, that's November 3rd through 6th. They're going to have digital opportunities as well, so you can register for those, any of those days. So, just as a reminder that that came out. So, if I stole your thunder on that one, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't. Thank you.
And then, I'm sure Dr. Mello will probably give a little bit of an update on the summer academies. So, before we do that, I would just like to say, and I sent out a communication earlier today, thank you to all of you, the school committee, for supporting us through this historic year. It is really important to have a school committee that supports all of the work that we do, because you are the one that's out there, and you're going to have all of our stakeholders come to you. And it is a understatement to say that we have a high-functioning community, town, school committee, and then all of our faculty and staff, and it really does take a village. And we've proved that. This year, it's been an extraordinary amount of work by many people with a lot of sacrifice, a lot of learning, and a lot of milestones that we've hit. But really heartfelt thanks and gratitude to all of our faculty and staff, everything they've done to reinvent school this school year, to all of our parents, the roles that they've had to play that's very different than what they've had in past years, and really supporting students academically and emotionally. I think as parents, we're parents here as well, and what we see with our own children and what they present with is different this year, and having to support them, and that is not unnoticed with what our parents have had to do at home, in addition to their own, really, challenges of getting through this school year. We couldn't have done it without a strong supportive community, and we've shown that we can do it. So, I began the year with our faculty and staff with a quote by Nelson Mandela, I mentioned this before the school committee meeting, "It always seems impossible until it's done." Tomorrow, we'll have some parades as our students exit, and we will have made it through this school year, and I will say, it has been an amazing school year with what we have done.
And in person all year, congratulations to you and your team. Amazing.
Yeah, it really has taken a lot by many people. People are tired, and they're looking forward to rejuvenating this summer, but really excited of how we're ending and thinking back to September where we began. We're in a very different place with vaccines coming out, really bringing hope and lessons learned as well. We do know that public education has changed forever, based on this school year, and we are excited to be able to see our students go off and enjoy a wonderful, safe summer, and to return on August 31st for students.
And for just enough time to rejuvenate before the summer academy. Dr. Mello.
Transition. Fantastic, yes. So, because the summer academy does not begin until August, yes, people will have some time to recharge. We've had a great response. We did have a few families who had already planned vacations, so we are working on some possible alternatives for those students, and we're very excited that we did have teachers come out and want to participate in the summer academies, and I can't say anything any better than Dr. Bertos said, because you said it beautifully, but I will just say, the gratitude that we have seen from, when we come to these meetings and we're with you, and from the community, and even from the teachers, as things have changed, and we obviously share our gratitude with them all the time, has just made everybody appreciate what we have so much more. And I heard from a parent the other day that their child, you know, school was not his favorite thing before this, and she said, "He's a totally different child, and he loves school, and he appreciates school." And I think that's one of my, my greatest takeaways as we move into next year, is that students will really be really excited to come back to school, and we hope it looks like what it should look like, and, you know, we don't know that, but we hope that it will. And so, that sense of gratitude, I personally also feel it for all of you, and the teachers, and every single person, from bus drivers to food service, everybody, because it does take a village. We're just fortunate. So, thank you all, and yes, tomorrow, we'll have made it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Yukna.
Yeah, we're, just, just so the committee knows, going through the budget process this year, obviously, as you know, we spent about $2.1 million in federal grants. We used it to supplement every possible item that we would have to basically save taxpayers' money in other areas, because obviously, the taxpayers will be paying for that over time. So, the one-to-one initiative, something we would, you know, wanted to do over time, obviously, now has been done. But one of the other benefits of that, and part of the issue around COVID, was we weren't able to do all the programs we typically would do, therefore, we didn't pay for all the programs we typically would do. We didn't run all the expenses we typically would have in a normal year. And so, our budget looks like we're, you know, in very good shape for the end of the year here. So, I've requested that we be able to come in front of the CIP committee one more time, as I did the first time we asked, even though they were only able to support three of the four buses we requested. As you remember, we didn't get two the year before. But I did request at that meeting that they give us the right for the fourth one, had we had funding at the end of the year. So, it looks like that will be one thing I'm going forward with. But at the CIP meeting, one of the two items I basically want to bring to their attention are both items that we've already asked the town for in the past. One is going to cost the town money one way or the other, and that is the one of the chillers at the middle school. It's about $150,000 to $175,000 expense. There's two of them there. It's 21 years old, and it basically isn't working, so we're running on one right now over there. I've already been in contact with MassSave, trying to get their rebates in line as well, which we've done in the past and has worked well for us. But, again, having, if we have the money to do that, I want the right to kind of pursue it. And the second one is on some of the musical instruments.
Yeah.
You know, trying to take advantage of having some of those funds. Again, we've put forward, over the last three years, the need that the high school has and the middle school for replacement of very old or aging instruments. We did already purchase some of them that were, we could, within the music budget itself, that they didn't spend. So, we've got some wind instruments, I mean, string instruments that are already on order as part of that original thing. Last year, we were able to buy the additional stands for the chorus side. So, you know, we've been trying to chip away with that, because we know it's a hard thing to be, you know, out there in the CIP, but if we can pick up some additional instruments, again, based on end of year, and my intent still is to return a fair amount of money back to the town on the school's behalf, again, showing that we understand our issues here, but we're trying to take advantage of some of these issues that we know have been lingering, that are just going to end up coming back to the town at some point in time anyway, if we can, and still give back money, I think we'd be in good shape. So, I wanted to make you aware of that's what we're trying to do.
And then, just reminding folks at home, the channels that that goes through are?
Yeah, so, it goes to the CIP committee, basically, they'll, in this particular case, because we're not asking for town funding, we're not looking for the funding side of it, what we're looking for is the authority side. Now, ironically, the CIP committee's regulations are that they have to meet on items. They don't have to approve it, but they do have to meet on it. Even if they don't approve it, if we have the funding, we can still do it. It's kind of a weird concept, but they have to at least meet on it. And I think in these cases, as I've said, the buses, the bus they already approved, because they understood the concept, they just couldn't financially do it, you know, with the town resources that were there. The chiller, like I said, is a rather big expense. We tried to mandate that about four years ago and spent some money on it, and it worked for a couple of years, and then that was the end of that. So, and like I said, the musical instruments, it really will depend on what we have available as to how much we can chip away at that. But anything we do, I think, is just an advantage for future years, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, for having the CIP meet and get together, and, but, and thanks for coming back. I actually was going to ask eventually at some point about the musical instruments again. And if no one knows about what this means in musical instruments, these are well taken care of by this music department, they're going to be around for years, and it makes a huge difference, and this is one of the only ways to do it. And so, us keeping, coming back to the well and speaking about it, I'm confident that this music staff and these programs will take care of these.
And we've had ours in service and continually repaired by our in-house trained staff for years beyond what is typical.
Far beyond what's typical, for one of the greatest music programs in the country.
There you go.
Clear as day, no questions asked.
There was one other item that I will probably bring up in front of them, I'm not sure, again, what the resources will be, but it's been raised over the years. This is obviously a town benefit as well as a school benefit, but the auditorium in the high school, which we were able to do certain things on lighting, floors, stuff like that, seating in there is pretty much original. So, you know, again, there are a couple of programs, one's actually through the mass corrections side, where they have a whole program of things that they do. You know, some of it's woodworking things, some of it's reupholstery and stuff like that, and they do it at a very good rate, if you will. So, we'll, again, we'll look at those, you know, that would be the third item, that would be my lowest priority, but it would be one of the items that if we could get to, to even start a process, would be good. Again, this, the school's a 1970 school, so we're talking about seats that have been there for 50 years.
And not all of them work.
Yeah, not all of them work, this is true.
They were real pretty in 1980. So, I sat them in in 1980, and they're still the same orange, orange, whatever color you call that. Does that color still exist?
Now, they cry.
It's called retro. It's called retro. Positive spin.
Thank you.
All I can think of is Shawshank Redemption, reseating, recovering the seats.
There it is. Sarah, any, any other matters?
I did. I wanted to thank Mr. Yukna, his office, and Janet. I just wanted to highlight, I have been going to sign the warrants, the reports are in here. There was one question I had, so I sort of did my chicken scratch on here, and that was just the school and town phone support. And I did give the breakdown of the, the school and the town, the breakdown, and also And also just wanted to highlight that it's a three-year contract. But thank you very much because these are really clear and I never, I, I didn't know, you know, the process last year or anything that happened, but this really is great so people can know what's going on, why and how and.
And I think what you're stumbling on too is some, is just how interconnected we are with the town side. There's a lot of things we do together and, and share the cost based on who uses what. So, if we use two-thirds of, of the phone system and they use a third of it based on our, our working populations, that's how we'll split something. If they have a higher cost on Microsoft's Outlook than we do because we get an educational grant, that's how it, it flows. So, but again, it's our organization working with them, controlling the entire thing. We don't go out two separate bids, two separate, you know, everything. We try to do, everything is a town.
Well, strength in numbers too. You're bidding for a larger project, you have a little bit more leverage. Anyway, thank you. I just wanted to report back that it's been going great.
Thank you so much. Thank you for volunteering and you for doing that.
Janet and Amy. I brought the baby in two weeks ago, so the baby got to visit.
Mr. Pearson.
I was just going to reiterate what Dr. Berdus already said, that your, your thank you to the school community, I thought the word reinventing was just perfect. So, thank you for leading us and for, as we reinvented it and Dr. Mello for all your curriculum work. I, I did want to just shout out to Bill for his work. I, I was thinking back as I read your message. I mean, Bill's, Bill Yukna's work on finances began about a year ago in March, right? So, we ordered these computers, you know, right out of the gate, right? With ideas and thinking and planning for finances, so.
Wait a minute, I, not to, not to go over, but she wrote for the CARES Act before COVID even came out, correct? Weren't these laptops in the works before we shut down? Are you talking about?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
It was almost like he had a crystal ball, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, that's what I'm talking about. So, I just, and, and I don't, I'm not, I don't want to say Bill over Dr. Berdus, but teen-wise, but Bill, Bill's work on the finances has been just out of this world. All the grants we've had to apply to, you know, this and that, following up on those grants. So, Bill, I just wanted to again, thank you for all your work. We're, we're here financially because of your dedicated hours and your focus, intense. So, it's, it's a big deal to this community when, when your business manager has his, his eye on the ball so effectively and in the game. And then finally, I wanted to say what you just said, which was earlier about the community. I just wanted to thank the community for supporting us out of the gate in a hybrid model. That's huge. We, we've talked about this numerous times, but it, it doesn't go without mention that there were school communities that were in remote learning. Actually, I'm confident to say into January and February. Am I right? I mean, yeah, I think we have nods.
And not for anything, the elementary model, amazing. There were kindergartners who weren't in school for weeks on a hybrid model. You got every kindergartner and elementary education student in the building five days a week. That's amazing. Just for the continuity of it at that age level, at that learning level, that's amazing. So, thank you.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
I was going to reiterate all the things you said, but thank you.
Sorry?
No, good.
Thank you, Michelle.
What, how can I top that? I, I'm just sitting here thinking, it's, it's kind of funny because it's like, we're, we're all coming out of such a crazy year, but to think back at how little we knew a year ago and, you know, because that's all I can kind of go back to because that's when I started on this school committee was a year ago and there was so much unknown, there was so much daily that was changing. And it just really shows that the teamwork involved in not just from the administration of, of the school, but we're kind of touching on it, the teachers, the town, the parents, everybody coming together and there were challenges along the way, but we all learned to, to be able to pivot on a dime. I, I, I know the five o'clock announcements on Fridays were probably the killer of just everything because it's like you think, finally, oh my gosh, just get me to the weekend and everything changes and all the plans and everything that you guys were working on, you had to change over the weekend to be ready for a Monday. And parents have been doing a lot more than they normally would with school and the involvement and everything. And, but it's everybody coming together and I really hope that kids in our community see that, that we can all in times of crisis work together. We've done it. We got through it and that's, that's a lot. So, thank you.
That's a great point. You had said it earlier about it's times of crisis, but also education's changed forever and some of the stuff that happened during COVID changed it for the better. You know what I mean? There are some positive things that came out and one of it is just seeing that sense of community, everybody just stepping up, teachers, you know, making five million lesson plans and figuring out, you know, one-to-one learning with their students. It was crazy.
Thank you. So, before Brent gets started, Sarah, do you want to jump in on, on the rest of it?
The rest of?
Yeah, so, just, are you good? Do you have any other matters you want to bring up?
No.
Okay, thank you. Brent?
I don't. Okay.
I have a couple of things for other matters, just to be a little bit of a, back to some of the stuff here. Sarah, for the Board of Recreation Committee, I don't know if we made this clear, it was a three, it is a, it is a three-year commitment. I don't remember that part of the discussion, but we did get a note. So, are you comfortable with a three-year commitment for that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Sarah.
I guess so. After you voted for it.
We voted for it.
Yeah, after.
It's three years, right? I love how that worked, so.
Thanks.
They, they, I think they delayed that message too.
There is another committee that I wasn't aware of. I don't remember, the Audit Committee? I don't, do we, I don't know if we've had somebody?
We've tried to get somebody on this for the last four years.
So, I, I got a note today saying they are looking for someone to join the Audit Committee. It is a two-year commitment, so I'll be upfront about a two-year commitment.
This is not a school committee member.
Right.
This is a member of the community at large to represent the school.
Right, so we can discuss it at, at another meeting if someone has, anyone that want, that they want to volunteer, we can do that, but it is a, it is a two-year commitment. It is planned to be one meeting per year plus meeting as needed, but it sounds like one meeting per year is probably.
Responsibility.
Yeah, is probably what, and they are looking for someone ideally with financial expertise or experience. So, it's not on the agenda, but I did want to bring it up. If anyone has someone that they think might be interested in volunteering, there is an open position and.
I, I believe Bernard Dumont is watching this meeting in rapt attention and I'll just pitch it to him as he ends his tenure on AdCom.
I played tennis with Bernard the other day. I didn't think of him, but I will ask him, so.
I think he'll have some time in his hands, Mr. Canfield.
That's right. And then the last thing I did, as I did talk about earlier, we do want to discuss at some point if the potential of moving the meeting, the start of the meeting time from seven to 6:30. Again, it's not on the agenda, we don't have to discuss it tonight, it's not something, but it would mean that we could, we would start it earlier, we would be done a little bit earlier. Some people could get home if they hadn't been home with their families, they could do that. Janet, I don't know if it opens up any of the meeting rooms if we move it to 6:30?
It opens up any other meeting room?[1717.14]